Welcome back to the Black House. Uh we're here in the studio again this week with the mighty T. Gapari.
What's good?
And also Byron, um I'm gonna say, we can get, we're also expecting a guest, but he's stuck on the motorway at the moment. And so he's gonna pop in as soon as, uh he's gonna buzz us up as soon as he gets here. So, um. To start off with, how was your, how was your week? I want to say this properly this week. How was your week this week?
My week was great. My week has been productive. Um collected a couple of bags, you know, just getting ready to move back to Aussie.
Right. Back to, back to Mackay.
No, oh god, no, no.
Where you going?
I'm going back to Newey. I gotta go back to headquarters.
Where's that?
Newcastle.
Okay, alright, yeah. So you're just up the road from Sydney?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a short train ride, as I recall. You got an amazing, um, you've got an amazing Aboriginal museum there. I understand. It was there when I was there in nineteen eighty-nine. I don't know if it's still there. Yeah, I don't know if it's still there. And you Byron?
Me?
Yeah, how's your week been?
We've been good, pretty hectic, but um hoping to calm down a bit soon, but.
Right.
I think I've been pretty good. Yeah, yeah, things are blah blah, pretty happy.
Well, I just wanted to start this off, while we're waiting for our guests, I just wanted to start this off with. My week of movies. Like, it's just been movies all week. And, you know. You got the African Film Festival happening at the moment, Murder in Paris, Wildlife Warriors, Ton Ton Manu. Um Flatland, I was really interested in seeing that one because it was kind of like the South African Thelma and Louise apparently. The Dakar Djibouti Mission, Beyond the Intersection, Under the Trees and Room King, like he's coming up now. Yep. Hey, is that you, Nuruddin? Just buzz up. TJ's gonna let you in. We're on air. Okay.
So good.
But the other thing, um, that I watched this week, and I just wanna give you my takeaway about it. I went to the Woman King. And that's uh Made in America, but it's uh, it's an African story. It's based on the true stories of the protectors of Dahomey, the Kingdom of Dahomey. And a king that was at war with the Oyo, their neighbours, and the transatlantic slave trade. Now look. So, as you go through the movie, I suggest any woman that's got any scrap in her, that's a fighter. That is, that is being told that they shouldn't talk, or they need to be quiet, or anything like that. When they, um, you know, growing up and out and about, go see this movie, it's gonna change and wind. About all of that, the patriarchal nonsense that we put up with over and over and over again. Yes, I've got an opinion. Go suck it, you know? So these women were women that had traumatic childhoods, or didn't fit the status quo of being marriageable. You know, rejecting it, or not wanting to go into a marriage that was gonna be abusive. Um, they experienced rape, violence on young bodies. So this is talking about the youths, right? And they're channeling this energy in this warrior fighting unit. Which was just amazing to watch, you know, like Viola Davis, there's one line in the movie, she's just an ordinary old, old woman. There's nothing ordinary about Viola Davis in this movie. She is ripped, absolutely ripped. And, you know, they found this sisterhood in the Agoji. And they were fighting for the kingdom and they were defending the kingdom. And it's part of the story, you know, that the Dahomey have. About the duality of, you know, leadership and godliness and stuff. So you've got the, you've got the male leadership and you've also got the female leadership. So right, and apparently, I think the story goes. The father before, or the father of the current king in the movie. He'd kind of pushed away from that, but the young king was bringing it all back.
Right.
And here's our guest. I'm just gonna finish off talking about the Woman King. And so that was really, um. That was really interesting for me, and so freeing as a person that's always fought against. It without realising what it was that you're fighting against. And if I had known about the Agoji as a young woman. I probably wouldn't have taken and internalised a lot of the patriarchal stuff that, that, that you end up internalising as a woman. As a woman that's also African. And I would have felt a lot more free. If you know what I mean. I think it was, it's a really important thing. So I really recommend it. For anybody who hasn't seen the movie, I'm not gonna give away any more spoilers, because I think that's enough. But if you haven't seen the Woman King, and you thought, you know, like, I'm really attracted to UFC and boxing, but I don't know why. And I don't know what people or men will think of me if I do it. Go see it, go see it. Or if you're that girl that, um. No, don't give me any nonsense, because I will bounce that ball back in your face. Go see this movie and you'll feel better about yourself. Alright.
I love it.
Um, I'd like to introduce Nuruddin.
The man of the hour.
The man of the hour, who's just recently been elected to Wellington City Council. How you doing?
I'm good. I just drive all the way from Laura Hut, and where a lot of community members are having a good time talking about mental health.
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, that was another takeaway from the Woman King, actually, is that it would have. I think that it's really good for your mental health, this movie.
Representation, yeah.
Representation.
Good for your mental health. Yeah, seeing yourself on screen, seeing yourself in powerful positions is cool. Yeah, it's really good.
But what's gonna happen today, Nuruddin, is I'm gonna let our friend Byron over here, our co-host Byron, Captain Byron. Captain Byron's gonna lead this discussion with you, because I've done enough talking for now. I'm gonna shut up and listen for a bit. Alright, take it away Byron.
Well, I mean, the, the point of today is to put you in, on the driver's seat, so to speak, but it's about you today, right? So first step's gonna be, tell us about yourself. Who, who is Nuruddin? Who is the guy? Where are you from? What's your background? Tell us about your journey to New Zealand, and tell us about yourself.
Cool. Um, look, my name is Nuruddin Abdurrahman. Uh, I born in a small town called Dejaji. Which is as big as, um, Newtown, as a suburb, or as big as, um, Island Bay.
Oh, wow, it's not that big.
It's not that big. And I left when I was a teenager, because it's only until year eight. From year eight onwards, you have to go to another city to, for education. So I left my family when, for high school. And then the rest of my time, I was in Adisababa, which is a capital city. The population is, um, two times the population of New Zealand, only the capital city.
Wow.
So from there on, um, my lovely wife, she came to New Zealand as a refugee, as a child refugee. She went back to Ethiopia for holiday.
Found you.
And actually, she chose me out of fifty million Ethiopian men, she said, this one is good.
Oh, when is it when?
Oh, she needs to make the choice.
Well, she's a good person, so she knows our teachers. So I end up in New Zealand in two thousand and eight. And from there on, I've been working really hard. Uh, my first job was at bakery, and then from there on at Warehouse Lal Bay.
Right, okay.
Local.
Yes. Been driving taxi and Uber, and while doing all those things, I find it a bit unfulfilling. So I thought I needed to be a bit educating myself as well. I went to university and, uh, where again, uh. My master's in international relations. And from there on, now, um. I, I joined Labour Party for a reason in two thousand and eleven, actually, just eleven years ago. When I went to Victoria University, I didn't know anything. At the university, it's free. This is a great country. I went to university, I said. I said, I want to study, and they said, yeah, what you need, they ask me blah blah, and just I guess enrolled. A month later, they sent me a reminder to pay overdue amount. I said, what the hell is this? I don't know. I just ignored it.
Yeah. Didn't you think, didn't you think, um, university education was free in New Zealand? I read that somewhere, yeah.
That's free, so I have no idea. And then from there on, they sent me as a reminder. And then I panicked. I went to my local MP. Which was Aneth King at the time. And I said, oh, they're saying this. And she said, Nuruddin, did you apply for a student loan? I said, what is that? Because when we, when you come to this country, the challenge is you have to navigate by yourself.
Yeah, there's new, there's new systems, yeah.
The whole system, and you don't understand. All I want is to study. I'm working, I, I don't know how the student allowance, the student loan work, but I said. I'm studying, education's free, I'm gonna study and support myself, that's it.
Once upon a time, university education was free. I think my friend Tania was in the la, oh, sorry, Tania, I just said your name. Was the last person that I knew, like, heard a lot were the last ones that went through on the free education thing.
It should be free.
It should be free. It was free for all those MPs.
So what happened is from there on, while I was just talking to her and trying to apply. And another letter came through saying, and now they passed me to debt collectors to pay one thousand for the fee. And I stopped education, thinking that they're gonna leave me alone, because when I applied for student loan. At the time, National Party came to power, if you guys remember, and they changed a lot of things. One of the things they changed was. To qualify for student loan, you have to wait two years after you become a resident.
Oh, okay, right. I didn't know that.
Yeah, so I just get caught, and I went back to Aneth King, and she just used, I don't know what magic, but. The thing was just weird. She's an amazing person, yeah. So. From there on, I said, I just kind of felt I need to support, you know, Aneth King. I started volunteering for her. And then recently, when, uh, the local councillor, Leifert Simon, an amazing person again. When she decided not to be running for council, some people, you know, just tipped me in, what do you think, Nuruddin? I just. They don't, that's a great kind of opportunity. So the Labour Party, we just went through. They all, they got their own process, about six people who run for that position amongst us in the Labour Party.
And you have to be living in the ward, right?
Not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily. So Labour Party, they just elected me to be representing as, to run as a Labour candidate.
Amazing.
So in one of the most progressive wards, which is Southern Ward, and amazing, you know, suburbs like Newtown. Where a lot of communities diverse, and where lovely people like Leah lives, and where people scoffing and everything. Yes. Lovely character. So yeah, uh, now I'm elected, and actually, a day, when was it? Two days ago, Sworren and At Marai, amazing kind of event.
Was that the one down on Custom Key?
Ton Ton Key.
Ton Ton Key, yeah.
Yeah, they would cover us there, I think it was for the first time. And we would have Maori, uh, mayor for the first time.
Yeah.
And it was.
Touring fan.
Touring fan, so it's really good, yeah. So that's me, and I have three children, a beautiful Ryan, uh, twelve. My daughter Sumaya, she's ten, and my little one is three, which is, she's very bossy.
Of course, of course.
I was in your shop the other day, and I was watching your boss, your boss mum around.
Little adult, little burn adult.
Yeah, and I also run with my lovely wife. We've got a small business that we run, so that's me, yeah.
Yeah, cool. Tell us more about that business that you run, what?
So the business that we run with my wife is just mostly, we import from, uh, outside of the country, mostly from Dubai. And we send rugs and Middle Eastern stuff, like perfume and housewares.
Me and Kerry were talking about it the other day when I was chasing you up. I'll come to your house. And, um, we're thinking of doing a bit of a walk around in your store for, um, the Black House. Instead of coming in and talking about your business, we'll go to you guys.
At some stage.
I think it, I think it might work better with some of the businesses too, anyway.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so I mean, you, you've mentioned, you know, your time and your tenure with Labour. Um, can you tell us a bit about, you know, you've, you've mentioned some of it already, but your motivations to run, right? To run for council. Wh- where did you see a gap? Where did you see there's something there that I can contribute to? You know, obviously, people were meant to, hey, Nuruddin, what you think, you know, you're like, oh, it'd be cool. But like, what made you say yes? Because oftentimes, people sit on the fence and kind of go, oh, I could do what I could, no, I don't know. What made you think to yourself, yes, I can do this, there's, there's a gap there for me to fill?
Well, I've always been in community space since I came to New Zealand. And I started with smaller community, like Oromo Community, and then from there on, when I was at Victoria University, I was the chairperson of African Student Associations. And from there on, I, I joined Multicultural Council of Wellington, and then Changemakers, African Community. So I have always been in community space and serving community, uh, as one of nine in my family. I came to this country, I just find it a bit tough. So for me, the way to engage with people is just by making. People around me as my community, my family. So I found community space that where I can do. And now, when it comes to deciding to run for council. When you are, when you see you're serving the community, African community, or the African students and multicultural. You see some gap, and we always try to work here, but our population is growing. We're not on the table in some areas where we need to making decisions.
Now, what are some of those gaps that you speak of?
Well, example, why, when you just see, okay, let's say, take this as an example. You guys go through funding process to get some, empowering the community, but people who make decisions in that funding space.
Yeah.
Do they understand how hard you work?
Yeah.
And do they understand the importance of the community development?
Yeah.
So, do they even understand you exist?
Yeah.
Right.
So that's why we need, in any spaces, we need to be part of the community. Ethnic communities in this country, we consider about twenty percent of the population. That means we need to be sitting in community boards, we need to be in part of the council, we need to be in parliament, we need to be all those spaces. When we get there, it's not only about us, we just, we know, we understand what it means for us. And we bring perspectives into that table. We got lived experiences. Why someone would be talking about community, when we have more manners to talk about the whole community, about the Wellington community. If I've been working in the community for a while, more than so many people who can just say, oh, I know this community. I know Newtown community, whether you are African, whether you are white, black, or whoever, I know more than, you know, most other people. That means we have friends, there are businesses there, and all those people that we know. So it's time for us to be on the table making decisions that makes the life better for people.
So did you feel that, that ethnic communities or African communities weren't being heard enough in the coun, in the council?
What, in any spaces? I think that is, you know, to have a good, i- if you start from your family. If you are husband or wife, or whatever, if you wanna make decision only by yourself, that's not how you live your life. You need to listen to your children, and then how they're working. You need to be sitting on the dinner table together and sharing that food. Whether it's a power, whether it's a resource, we need to be on that table and sharing all of us together. So that is politics as well. Politics by definition is who decides what, for who? So do you want someone to decide for everyone else, or neither do I. I don't want to decide for everybody else. But I want to be part of that decision-making process that makes it easy for people.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I, I was just gonna bring up, I was gonna bring up a question. It's a little, it's a little bit off track, but it was, we graduated together, right? You and I did, yeah. Because, because I felt so bad for the longest time, right? Like, I say to my wife all the time. I was like, oh, I said to my parents, I was, oh, there was, there was Africa, we're hanging out and graduation thing. And then it was at the, the Africa Day celebration, you brought it up to me, and I was like, oh, yeah, we did. I felt so. This, this is me in a public capacity apologising for not remembering. Yeah, and I, and that's a transition, I wanna talk about, you know, your education. How do you, how do you find your education has helped you in these spaces? And assisted you in, in where you are now?
Well, I think it's helped me in a lot of ways, because I studied computer science for three years before I moved to New Zealand.
Oh, right.
So when I went to study, the same thing, after I went through that, how the education system works, how I have to wait two years, I said. Why is this? Hang on, why, I need to look at those things. So now I switch into even studying something different. Instead of dealing with computer, I just said, I want to study development. And then I started studying development, study, and then international relations, which dragged me into more of the politics as well. And then.
You did woman studies?
No?
You said you did woman studies?
No, no, development. So that just kind of, I came to understand a lot of things, how it impacts your life. And I also just.
How politics impact your life?
Exactly. Personally, for me, National Party at the time, making a decision of, you have to wait two years. After you get your residency, to just study. It was just kind of, okay, what is this?
National Party just wasn't for minority. It wasn't a minority party.
It's never been a minority.
It never been. So that is the moment for me when I just said, okay, and then tried to understand a little bit. Them having that policy, and from, on the other side, someone from Labour, which is Aneth King, supporting me. To go through, because I can't afford to pay that overdue amount. So that is kind of life-changing for me. It's also added into more for me when I just, even though more than the study, when I just start thinking of the politics as after the Christchurch massacre. I came that time, I was, I picked my daughter from Newtown school, I came home, I missed few phone calls, and I didn't realise. And then someone texts me, and then when I open Facebook, and all the information's out there. And I didn't know what to do, I was just sitting like this, and I cried, and my daughter saw me, and she doesn't know, she just, what happened, Baba? Because we were just coming from school laughing, and she didn't know, now suddenly I'm crying. And then. I just said, council mayor, we can, we need to go. And I, I didn't know where to go, but I just put her in the car, I just drive to the mosque. When I go, when I'm in the mosque, I saw people that I thought wouldn't be there. A lot of the, you know, the white people and a lot of the Pakhehas crying. And then having flowers, and just, I saw them just like me, being touched, really, just being crushed there. And then when they see my daughter and me just running to us and hugging us and crying. And that kind of just made me, oh, actually, it's not like us and them. It's only small minority who've been making us through this struggle, and now getting that support. Instead of being really being felt that one, I also left the fa, the love from the community. And then I even wanted to get involved more in the wider community. I just, I just wanted to understand. Oh, if they have positive thing, positive kind of vibe towards me. Maybe it's time for me to get engaging a little bit in that space as well. And the same week, if you remember, uh, there was a big, uh, Aroha organised at Bezi Reserve.
Hmm, yes, yeah, that's right.
I'm one of those people who organised that, with the Justin Mayor, and Ibrahim and a lot of us, we get involved, we form a committee. So that was kind of bringing the whole community to just say, oh, this is a great thing, so to show we are together. And then when I saw everyone just coming there, and kind of showing the Aroha. That is kind of solidifying my trust that I have in the community. And next day, I wrote an article saying that now I feel welcomed to New Zealand at Aroha. I don't know if you guys read the article, you can read it. So I just wrote that article, just to navigate around. At the time, the difficult thing was, the community was just saying, why we are attacked? And we've been censored so much. Now, the community is just very angry, and they're most closed. And then. The Pakhehas and the other community, they said, they are really sad and angry to what happened, but at the same time, they are worried. Maybe retaliation is gonna happen. So for me, it's just, I have to navigate, even though I'm suffering, I have to navigate how we can. Calm down the community at the same time, this is a minority, we have to go through processes. But at the same time, giving some kind of comfort.
Yeah.
Showing those people who are supporting us, we do understand the support.
Is it, oh, sorry, Claire?
Now, that same comfort, I was reading the article of the woman who came into your store.
That happened after a while, and this is.
Wait, wait, can, can we elaborate on what that is? Because I, I don't think, I don't think I know that.
There, um, there was a woman who came into a store and basically attacked him with Islamic phobic slams.
Was that your store?
Yeah.
Someone, someone had, someone had sent it to me, but I didn't say who it was. Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, keep going.
So this woman came in, you know, she said, your, your religion is evil, and she wanted to be that staunch Christian who just knew it all. And I'm like, you're an embarrassment of Christians, we don't know you, we don't claim you, but. It, it was reading the level of calmness that you had, and the wanting to understand. You were, you were patient with her until you said, alright, get out. You're doing too much, get out. But was, was it. Through all that Aroha that you were showing that, not everybody is like that, and that's why you had such a level of patience. You're better than me, I wouldn't listen, out. Yeah.
No, it was a tough time, I'm telling you, and I don't know her, she just walked straight to the shop, and this is what happened, and she said. She came to me, are you, straight away, she said, are you African? She said, yes, you know, people when they come to you, this is something that we always. She said, some of them you don't know, it's just for positive thing. So I just said, yes. And then she said, are you Muslim? I said, yes. Oh, what an evil, what a shame. That's what she said. I said, what? Now, I just said, I took my phone, this is gonna be interesting. Straight away, I just took my phone, I pulled like this. I said, what do you mean? And then she says. Islam is evil, and she started talking about Quran and a lot of things, and I said. Anyway, the funny part is, I just patiently just listened to her. For me is, I knew there are people like that who, they exist. Because I know in the community space, I have been around to. I wanted to understand where she coming from, why she's saying this, where she getting her information.
Yeah.
And then she also thinks that I'm outsider when she is here. So you know, always the notion that we don't belong here. So I wanted to understand that, and I asked her, how much she knows about Quran? And do you ever read? And she says, no. Where did you get your information about this, this media? And then I also just, the, the video is very interesting, if you watched it. I also asked her, where you come from? And she told me her family from Holland. And I said, ah, okay, so, you know, she's. Was making it in New Zealand than me, and she is we and versus us, you know?
We have an immigration path together.
Yeah, but yeah, it's, it's not that she was seeing that, she's, she's seeing this.
Yeah.
She's not seeing what her background is either. She's not considering that, you're foreign too. You're foreign to this land too, yeah, but I admire the level of calmness that you had.
I was boiling inside, I don't have to lie, but at the same time, you just have to be, you know, one, I'm in the shop. It's my business space. Two, I, um, you know, when you are a family and when you are a community leader. You need to show example, you can't just be going to her level. That means, you know, those kind of people. They are really, you know, when they go down, if you go down with them, they are well experienced in that space, they will take you badly. So the moment you bring the game up, they lose.
Yeah.
And she came in looking for a rise out of you. She, she, she had no, she was not looking for any rise, she was not looking for any, it's just nothing. She came in looking for you.
Yes.
She came in looking for you, and, and power to you, because you, you kept your cool, calm and collected, and. They, you know, people laughed antagonised black people. They loved, you know, rise of us, they wanna get the angry black man, they wanna get the angry black woman, they're trying to push you. Just so they can get your mood and say, eh, see, this is what I've been talking about. They love to poke a bear.
I'm, I'm curious to know if, you know, in your, in your search to understand extremism in New Zealand. Have you, have you been looking at work by Paul Spoonley and other sociologists that have actually. Studied these different groups that are in existence in New Zealand?
Have I looked at, uh, well, exactly, actually, it's one of those people who say structural racism exists in New Zealand. That's the reality. And people like us, you don't have to do anything when you have this colour. And, or when you have hijab, you qualify to be discriminated. And it's, I don't know if I have to say this, but the crazy part is, sometimes people just because of that. They would throw so many things. I saw during campaign time, because I'm black, and black is associated with so many things. They throw a lot of rumours against me.
Oh, absolutely.
But, oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, but the, the good thing.
Tell us about that a little bit?
Well, I think, since I'm in that political space, I just want to reserve it, but the problem is, you know. Just having this by itself qualifies you to be, to a lot of stereotypes.
Unfit for.
Exactly. You, you, you are not qualified to be a leader, because you are this and that. They don't even have to have a single thing. To be honest, it's just, I, I don't believe we just all. Got a space to learn from our mistaken stuff. But since I came to New Zealand, the only thing that I have in my record is parking ward, the parking ticket. So you know what I mean? I'm saying, I'm not saying, but they, they don't, they don't need anything, but. Because you look like this, they just throw all kind of unbelievable.
I think the racism in New Zealand, and you know, like, that I've observed, is especially directed against, uh, indigenous leaders. Or people of colour, any people of colour actually, in any public space, is, has been quite, uh. It's, it's always been there, as far as, you know, like, when Murri, uh, when, when the Green MP, uh, MP. Stood up for how she actually survived during, during the, the welfare cuts and slashes, and people were renting out rooms in their apartments. She was just telling the truth.
Yeah, she was crucified for it.
And she was crucified for it, for telling the truth, you know, and this is, this is something, um, I've, I've often been irritated about. Is, when I, yeah, I'd say irritated about, it's like when you have, when you have a sense of power, and then they wanna treat you like you're a child. With that power, not give you the, the benefit of the fact that you're, you know. There's, this, this tooth, what is that, what was that thing from slavery? Two thirds a man? You know, like, um, so you were capable, you know, people of colour were capable. You know, like, um, so you were capable, you know, people of colour were capable of. Because they weren't really fully formed humans. And, you know, growing up in New Zealand, I heard that a lot. I especially heard it, cause you know, unfortunately for me, I had the benefit of a very right wing racist stepfather. Who used to talk like this about manifest destiny and all of this stuff, so I was there at the kitchen table listening to it. And then walking to the bathroom and looking in the mirror and going, they're talking about me, and that made it. That made me hypersensitive to racism at a very young age, because I was sitting at the table with the other side. So I was, so my question for you is like, you know, does it make you want to understand? How the, cause that guy, let's be honest, that guy that shot up that, that, the, the mosque. He didn't do that alone, he had help. And that help wasn't from Australia, that help was here.
In terms of like, does it make you want to understand people who would commit those acts or think like that because? The people you represent, the people you care about are the ones who are affected by those. You know, like at the end of the day .
Cause I got stuck.
I've, I've said, I've said to my wife and to my brother before, I said, I see white supremacy as, as a white person's issue in the sense that it's your community doing these things, but we're affected by that. So there's, there's not responsibility, but it's, it's helpful to understand those people.
And there's also that thing about like, why do we have to come up with the solutions when the problem is being perpetrated? By, you know, the people that believe these things, if they really wanna change things, they should be coming up with solutions of how to address their own people.
Yeah, but I guess, you know, in terms of a question for you, in terms of the capacity that you're in right now as a leader, like, how do you think about those, those things existing and? How do you, you not plan to fight it, but how do you deal with them in your capacity as a leader, you know? You've been so magnanimous and so great with your responses to people, even though you're boiling inside, you're still kind and thoughtful, um, you know. Cause surely that, that takes a lot of willpower, but you're probably aiming to do something about some of that, right?
Well, I think it's, that's what I'm saying, even though that was boiling for me, reciting and putting out there. Was like one of the big thing that you can do, uh, I can do at that time, and a lot of people learned from it. And there are people who came to the shop and crying and saying that, I'm sorry what you guys go through, we didn't know this. So it's kind of, you know, there are a lot of good people out there. And they don't really know what we are going through. And then for us is, we need to communicate, we need to just say, look, this is what's happening. And when we communicate, we are not addressing that racist guy. We are, or whoever is there, we are addressing to the, the majority.
The people who actually care.
Once we have them on board, once they understand us, that's what makes the whole thing, if you see the Christchurch thing, it's such a horrible thing to happen. But for the Muslim community. It's very sad to lives. And lives, families to, to massacre in such a way, but we got a, like a break now. We used, I used to, even myself, you, you censor yourself every single time, yeah. Because, because you are a Muslim, you're always being watched and something happens, you panic.
Because they're quick to look at you and point the finger.
Exactly. But now, from that straight away, when we get targeted, it shows the whole community, we are not a threat. We're the one who is just getting treated, you know, the traitor is against us. It's just, there are who, people who really think to eliminate us, that's what that guy was looking for, he doesn't care who's shooting children. So I think for me is targeting the ma- the majority to understand what really exists here. That means, if you see people who elected me now. Do you know, ten people who run in the southern world? Seven of them, they're mostly seven, six of them, they run on grievances. And on kind of negativities against us, but the majority of the community, they voted me and Laurie Foon. So that means people, they are not looking at, you know, those who are trying to divide the community. I'm not saying all the seven was trying to divide community, but there are elements of people who were very negative towards me and Laurie in one of those campaigns. The majority of the community is, they, they are white people, they are just di- very diverse community who elected me now. So for me is representing them and making to understand. Now I'm not only they represent, I also represent. My black community and.
You're the first, uh, councillor that I've ever seen, walking around. The council flats and knocking on doors and stuff like that, so you know, you, you bothered to get out there. And meet the people that are gonna be part of your constituency, you know what I mean?
Exactly, if you see, that's what I'm saying, we are, we qualified, we are contributing in this land. I'm not just given this council job. I work hard for it, been door knocking for months and months, I don't knock more than three thousand houses in, in our ward. With my volunteer, and we distributed thousands, thousands of leaflets. And I spoke with, met a lot of people, so that means we are hardworking more than anyone else.
And I mean, like, what it really came down to, who did I see? Cause I don't have time to chase people around, like, just to, to assume that we can all go to the rallies and whatnot, that's not the case for everyone, you know, but who did I see? I still knew it.
I didn't even take Leah example as someone that I know very well, but I didn't took her vote for granted. I knocked her door two, three times.
I know you're in there.
I'm like, I get it, you get it.
I went to her door and we door knocked, I noticed it in Leah's house.
You made sure she knows you're around.
Exactly, and I went to eat, yeah.
Sorry, you, you made an effort to know your people. Whereas your others, they, like you said, come vote for me. But they don't know who's in the area, who's in their ward and, and people love people who they know. It's just, it's the same way when you walk into a store, people will always gonna remember how you treat them.
And how, how important is that to you to get to know the people in your constituency? I mean, obviously you've said it is, but you tell some bit more about that.
Well, I think that is, look, it comes to an issue example, I campaign on values that I stand for. Very progressive values, and when you just sit from far, you don't know what, who. Major, the majority of people really understand what you're talking about and if you are communicating with. Now, you don't have a doubt, what you campaign on is what the majority of the community believes in. So climate change example is just such a real thing. But we have people who just always, uh, you know, says, no, we, we can't do anything about it. Who campaign against doing anything and addressing this climate change. But I campaign on it, when I talk to people, I, I met people who are against, I met majority who is in support. Now I have a mandate to say, oh, this is real, I'm gonna make policies depending on the vote I got. And I campaign on inclusivity. And tha- the importance of representation. And people, some people, they say, oh, representation, we just have to gonna make it easy for you, we're gonna talk to you, we're gonna listen to you, whatever you says. But you being on the table is not really gonna be, you know, but when you are out and talking on this and people say, what are you, what are you talking about, makes sense. That is where your legitimacy comes to, that is what knowing your community in the ground. That door knocking, talking to one to one, gonna come to drive the decision that you make.
It was an interesting observation you made about, um, who knows people. Knowing your people in the community, cause like what we don't probably often talk about is the unseen borders between communities. So, you know, like, um, you know, like when, when you've got the Pakia New Zealand going, oh, we didn't know it was like that. Like, what is the border in a country as small as New Zealand that you can't understand or see what's going on? You know, so I thought that, yeah, I think that's really interesting, how do you? How do you fe- how do you feel about, uh, crossing those borders and going into other communities? And places that might not be as familiar to you?
Well, I think that is a good challenge for me, uh, I always want to learn a new stuff, I want to learn a new culture, it's just the same way. Otherwise, if we are not learning, we're just gonna sticking to ourselves, if we are not learning how others things and what they, you know, what commonality that we have. We're gonna end up like those other people, you know, just idiocy is not only for only one community, it's everywhere. So we don't want to end up being one of them as well, so we need to be. First understanding our values, our community very well, and then engaging with the rest, what do we have in common? Let me give you an example in the south, where I run in Wellington South, uh, one of the things that I campaign is we need to build more houses. And we need to make, uh, income related rent subsidy for people. What me, what that means is, it doesn't matter whether you are a refugee immigrant or someone who born here, white, black. You deserve a decent life. What that means is how much you pay for the house that you live in should be fair. And then you also, you know, we all have a dream, some of us, we want to own a house one day. That means we need to build more houses, but where we gonna build more houses? Somewhere in the jungle there, no, I want to live in the community here, my children growing up here. If we want to build it here where my community is going to school, how we gonna do it? The space is limited, we have to build up. That means we need to make decisions, building houses up. And that is amongst the policy that.
And also like looking at housing sizes, I mean, you've got, you've got small families and you've got large families. And the average one by, what was it, three by one standard government house or council unit. Isn't suitable for all families that are intergenerational. And, you know, a lot of African families, for example, are intergenerational in the house. You'll have the older people and the younger people and, you know, not all of us that go, and some of us won't be able to go out flatting, cause we're too old to go out flatting, nobody wants. Nobody wants to flat with you, you're really sixty, mate, so, you know, that throws that option out the window and, um. You know, like, and then there's the council, the council housing, and, you know, they're gonna move to a community housing project. And that's all very, um, I'm questioning it a lot. Um, it's a very difficult, there's gonna be, when the rent freeze comes off, it's gonna really show where we're all sitting. And if people can, uh, still afford to live where they're living. Because we have had the rent freeze on, but, yeah, like a little bit more about your, um, ideas around, uh. Council housing, because you're in the council now, and also, um. You know, the, the, the African community that that affects, cause while you're walking around, you would have seen it's quite heavily populated by African heritage folk. So.
But that being said, and I, I wanna, you spoke about, since we can't build out, we have to build up. In my experience around the world, when they build up for community housing. It's easy for them to group certain minorities together. How, how do you feel about that? Because I feel like that's, that's just them playing into exactly what they want, put us all in one big jungle.
I think that's already happening.
That's sort of, that's a word, that's.
But that's just gonna get worse, if we're gonna start building up, if we can't build out, we're gonna start building up and now we're just gonna have the Chinatown, we're gonna have. Arab town, we're gonna have black town.
Like, like Sydney. And, uh, yeah, but anyway, tell us what your views are on that.
Well, I think it's for me is what the community wants is the most important thing, and imagine, uh, uh, let's see, if you prefer. To live in a more diverse community, that is what it is, and what diversity means is also something that we need to be, you know. For me, this is diversity example, we can, uh, uh, you know, it's not like white and black, it was all black and black, no. He's from South Africa, I'm from Ethiopia, you, my friend is from. So what I'm saying is, this is diversity, but people when they look at it. Black or whatever they, you know, they might level it in that way, so. For me is what the community wants, if people want to be living together in the way that they can be empowered. And they can have, I came from a background, I told you, one of nine for my family, you know, and. Neighbors like, you drink coffee together. And you need to understand each other, if you are someone who hate Ethiopian food cooking, you know, the smell when we're cooking or something. If you are someone like that, you, you might, maybe you don't want to live there, you know what I mean? So someone want to live next door, so I think for me is, um, not segregating, but if, it depends what.
So your, so, so your perspective is you wanna create policies and mechanisms that people have choice and they can, they can.
Cause it's not like redlining in America, it's not the same thing, I mean, if you can afford to live in richer areas, you probably go there.
But that's the thing.
Yeah, I've always just lived in, in heavily Polynesian Maori communities and, yeah.
Well, I mean, one of the biggest things that restricts choice is economics, right? What can people afford?
What can people afford?
Can they go, um, and I think that's part of what happens is that, the reason why people end up in these, these communities where it seems very ethno, ethno based. It's partly because of economics, you know, like who were the historically marginalized people? Why don't they have the money to move into these places? So then, you know, in America, for example, a lot of the, the white folk move out to the suburbs because the, the. It's very expensive out there and many, many African Americans can't afford, so they have to move to the inner city, so these things occur as well, and I guess that's also a question about. You know, I'm gonna raise on the question so much, yeah, economics.
It's kind of the reverse in New Zealand where the wealthier are, the closer you are to the city and the, and or further out. And then you have these areas where the, it's very just white areas, you know.
That's what we need to change, you know, that's what we're saying example now, part of the special plan, which is a district plan as well. Is to build more houses around Newtown and Island Bay and perhaps, you know, all the way Adelaide roadside, which means. If you are someone, a young person who is working in the city. The public transport is gonna go with that, if you wanna bike to city, it's gonna be easy, if you wanna be driving to.
We never, ever talk about the, the groups of white people living together and taking. We only talk about the ethnic groups all staying stuck in one suburb, what about all the white people getting stuck in one suburb?
Well, I mean, that's pretty interesting too, because one thing that you find in a lot of sociological literature is that whenever ethnicity becomes a conversation, it's always about ethnic minorities. And like, I mean, there's, there's, there's a new branch, not a new branch, relatively new, probably early two thousands in sociology that is called like whiteness or whiteness studies to talk about. What's unique about whiteness that has created these. These ethnic patterns in society. Yes, like what's, what's unique, what's interesting about white power, you know, why, you know, why white people chosen, I don't want to talk about white people, that's a bad thing, you know. It's, it's an ethnic group that, that, um, often doesn't get grouped together, you know, in New Zealand, we as Africans get grouped together as like a monolith. I feel like many, many Pakia get the privilege of being individuals and get individual choices. And I guess maybe in, in that sense too, how do you see that playing out? Like what is your, what is your, when you, when you look, think about our community as Africans? You think about the refugee community, immigrant community and Pakia, like how, what's, I guess what I'm asking is what are, what are the inter-ethnic relationships that you think about in your position now?
Yeah, I think it's, we all doing great stuff in our own spaces and for me, that relationship means. The positivity that we already created, the negativity that we are raising from, you know, the public space and. It's, it comes to individual choice as well, it's, it's, I decide who to marry to. And that means, that doesn't mean, um, uh, we are deciding for the whole community. That means you are even becoming a bridge in, for that understanding if you are in that space. And now for me is when I get into this space, I'm not only African now, I'm a southern world councillor. That means I do represent all the communities in this space, whether they voted for me or not. That means through that process, I want to be a bridge that brings those communities together. Whether it's those communities, different communities, whether you are an Indian background or African background or Croatian or from. Ireland or England. For me, you, I represent all in the south, so how can we come together? And having space where our children can see themselves, whatever they dream for, instead of discussing. They don't have to prove to you, they belong here, they are already here, I'm the one who's making decisions on how to make that possible. So those children look at Newtown School, more than twenty different cultures in that school. That means, much more than that.
About fifty two.
There you go, so, that, what that means is, we, you, we need to be in the school board, so we can make it. Decision that impacts the student, that inclusivity, so they can see, you know, when I go home. For me, it's not only me, for my children, I always struggle, there is an identity that I want them to take and I also want them to take the identity of the country here. Mixing up, but you struggle with a lot of those things.
I can tell you a funny story about Newtown School, uh, my son was the first African kid. In Newtown School that spoke fluent Maori and used to confuse all the teachers. Would be in their corners having their little scraps and fights and he'd be over there with all the Maori kids speaking fluent Maori. And they're like, what, what, where did this kid come from? Well, he came from the Kohanga Row, where he was the first African kid to go through the. So he got right into some, completely exposing him right now. So, um, yeah, so he was, he went through that Newtown and that's the real, that's, that's how crazy Newtown is, right? Like, this is where the borders absolutely clash and cross over, where you've got kids from other ethnicities, speaking other languages. As well as English and, um, it's all doable and it's all fine, you know?
That's funny that you went to Kohanga, my mom tried that, she took the fire to Kohanga and he would cry every time. They, they would.
I actually told a few people that were having, um, issues with, with just childcare. Cause the Pakia childcare centres are so expensive, I'm like, you know, why don't you try Kohanga Row? You know, because they've got their things in place that. You know, because they've got their things in place that make it easier. And here's the thing, if you want a language to grow. You've gotta share it with people other than just Pakia. You gotta share it with everybody, you know? So what better way than through Kohanga?
Yeah, but speaking of community safety, as well as making housing affordable. Um, what about safety? Because what I really found in community housing is, and especially again, sorry mum. But as my mum works in housing, there are, there are areas and certain housing companies that she won't go without a security guard. But those very same people who cause havoc in these communities harass good families and their kids. They always get priority. Is that something that'll ever be addressed?
Well, I think, yeah, um, just let me make it clear first, um, when you're a city councillor, you just deal a bit on, on a high level. But when it comes to those issues, for me, the most important thing is why some people are in certain ways. So do we need to address the issue in the ground? If you see, no one born to be, you know, um, a bad person. Of course, you know, whatever we perceive as a bad person. Is that an economic thing? Is that a family issue that take that person into that level? Is that a, um, um, some kind of a mental health issue? So we need to work collaboratively with the central government or with anyone else on addressing those issues. Before we just, you know, I think that's the best way to address it. There are people who just say, oh, look them up, but no, I think that's not that easy. And it's also, um, those people, I, I think everyone, humans are good until something in their life.
Doesn't reason not to be, yeah.
So for me, it's especially, especially those who live in, around space housing and counselling, uh, city council houses. We need to find how to address the, the deep rooted issues, the economic issues, the social issues, the mental. So I think that's the best way to be, uh, addressing it. But at the same time, um, citywide, we have what we call a Poneke promise. We do work with the police, uh, as a city council and addressing some of those issues. If someone is example. Really, um, and not, uh, giving hard time to everyone else, to or to themselves as well for whatever reasons. There is a way that can be dealt with, yeah.
I feel like the police don't do enough when it comes to those communities. From what I've seen personally, I just don't feel like they do enough. And there are certain things they just kinda let slide because to them, it's like, this is just community housing and that's just the standard. That shouldn't ha- that shouldn't be that way. That you accept it because it's community housing.
Or, or, or public housing, cause it's, you have the similar sort of situations in both. But then, with that being said, you know, like, uh, when I was in Taranaki. Uh, but there's no work there, so nobody stays there. Well, it wasn't in, um, my whole neighborhood, my whole street was Black Power. And Black Power actually worked together to support the parent, the parents, the single mums. You know, they came and mowed our lawns. They came and, you know, they, well, they mowed my lawns for free because I had free magic mushrooms growing on my lawn. I'm like, go for it. I don't, I don't deal with that stuff. So I got mine free, but they, they, they had their own work gangs going on. And I mean, you know, like, it really comes down to how your community and the leaderships within those communities actually really guide. There's leadership even within gangs. There's leadership within, and within lots of different communities. Um, you know, like, let's look at, you know, even, you know, that marai that was, that burned down in the southern world. You know, that was built by Black Power. That was built by gang members coming out of jail. So I don't, I don't wipe them, I don't wipe them off. You know, I'll never forget the boys that used to come and. You know, yeah, they might have gone on and done some crazy things later on, but they mowed my lawns for free. And they helped me out as a single mum in a neighbourhood where they were helping out other single mums because they couldn't afford. To pay. This was right at the time of the government welfare slashing and they couldn't afford to pay. You know?
But it's never really the gangs that are causing havoc. It's always Cracky Maguire.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I guess this is perhaps what, you know, what you mentioned earlier. Maybe we're doing like a full circle now. You know, you've mentioned that it's about telling and communicating those stories and those lived experiences, right? Um, and do you feel like you as, as a councillor now have an opportunity to really speak to? The experiences that you know exist in places like Newtown and those things and different communities and those things. Do you feel like you, you're in a position to represent those stories?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm saying. And also creating more exemplar is kind of for our kids and who they. Who they look at, you know, so we need to be making our case of, when I grow up, I can be this. So when they look at me, I'm the first African, but they can see, they can, for sure, they want, they can be, uh, the next councillor, the next mayor, the next MP. And telling the stories, as you say, it is just through the work that we do, but at the same time communicating it in such a way, the lived experience of the, the people on the ground.
Give them hope for a better future, let's go.
Hey, I'd like to thank you for coming into the Black House, uh, Nuradine. It's always wonderful to have you come through. We're coming up to our time. That's it for us. You're gonna have music for the next couple of weeks. We're going on holiday. I'm tired, I'm tired.